To allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Hopefully everyone's mics work. We were here early getting everything set up and we've got the annual meeting following this, so we're going to move briskly along the agenda. And first, we want to go to recognitions and advanced placement scholars. This is on Sandy Kowaj.
Hi. We're pleased this evening, and just note that we're still waiting for it to boot up, so you probably can see names, but the audience cannot at this time see names. AP Scholars, though. The College Board program offers several AP Scholar awards to recognize high school students who have demonstrated college-level achievement through AP courses and exams. Their achievement is acknowledged on their score reports that is sent to colleges throughout the coming year. And just wanted to share this evening, I did not invite our top, knowing that usually we bring them back in just a couple months, once we know further awards that come out. But we had 128 scholars recognized this year. So AP Scholar, we have 54 in that category. This is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Then we have 28 AP Scholars with honor. This is for students who average a score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams that they've taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. Lots of different categories. Next, we have AP Scholar with distinction, and that is 46 students. And this is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. And then the last category is National AP Scholar, and we have three students. And I'll read those names, although I might need help if someone knows the name. Hannah Bennett, that one's quite easy. Michael Laraya, does anyone know the name? And Emmeline Zaworski. And these students received an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. So outstanding students. As I said when I started, 128 scholars this year. Last year, we had 119. 2013, there was 108. And 2012, 75. Just to give you an idea, over the course of the four years, 2012, 75; this year, 128. Just amazing things that our students are doing and taking rigorous coursework. And I'll share more about some of our advanced placement results later. The second recognition, then, I'm going to invite Kirsten Ammon up to the microphone. Kristen is a ninth grader at Hudson High School, and she recently attended Space Camp at the U.S. Space and Rocket Center in Huntsville, Alabama. You might recognize her dad out there, he's a social studies teacher at the high school. Kirsten was awarded a fall scholarship, a full, not a fall, a full scholarship to attend. Scholarship competition is intense, requiring a student to submit an application with a detailed description of a science experiment, two essays, a mission patch design, and three letters of recommendation. Only 18 percent of those applying this year received full scholarships. Kristen is here tonight to be recognized for her outstanding accomplishment, and I've asked her to share a few highlights from her experience. Kirsten.
Well, probably my favorite part of the trip was when we got to do the missions. And so they were, they would put us in these, either like capsule or shuttle simulators, or a simulator of the International Space Station, or a mission control simulation room. So on the first mission, I was a mission specialist, so I went up in the shuttle and did a mission outside of the shuttle to repair something on the International Space Station. So I got to suit up in a fake space suit and head out into mock space. And in our second mission, I was an EECOM, which was the environmental and emergency communications. So I had like the final say on what we did to solve anomalies that occurred, and I did a lot with helping whatever happened to go wrong on the shuttle, and checking the environment to make sure we were safe for takeoff and landing. Another fun thing was, we had a lot of lectures, and my favorite one was probably the one we did on relativity. So that was a really cool lecture to listen to, and there were people from all over the country who came, and it was really cool to meet someone from North Carolina, or Chicago, or Southern California, or South Dakota.
That's great.
Thank you, Kirsten. I can tell from both your speech, your communication, your confidence, that you represented Hudson High School very well. Hard to believe that that's just a ninth grader, correct? And now our picture is up. Kirsten, who is with you in this picture?
That's Wendy Lawrence, one of the astronauts.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're a freshman this year, Kirsten? Is that right? Or Kirsten?
Yeah.
All right. Any board members have questions for Kirsten?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. One of the names on the list is Hannah Saifullah. And I attended the annual art exhibition, and she was one of the AP students who had her work on display. And I have to say, as an art teacher myself, I was absolutely impressed, not only with her work, but just the, you know, the exhibit and the display itself, and the thematic way that her work carried through in all of the pieces. So I thought she was out. I'm commenting on her as also an outstanding student. Thank you, Kirsten.
Mr. President, I have a question for. Is there a next step for you as far as any opportunities as it relates to a next step from this opportunity that you had?
I would love to go back to Space Camp next year, and as much as I can until I'm too old to go. And after that, I would definitely want to try to be an astronaut.
So do the experiences build on one another? So if you went next year, you would be doing different work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Each year, it like changes, and you do different things than you did the last.
Great. Thanks for sharing. Thanks for representing Hudson.
Considering that you just finished eighth grade, what about our curriculum here at Hudson that prepared you for Space Camp? That's what I'm curious. Is it the math, or what do you think it is?
Well, I didn't really know that I was able to go to Space Camp until I was informed through Mr. Deleon, the electronic, like the technology teacher at the middle of school. So I wouldn't have even known that I had this opportunity if I hadn't taken his class.
Well, great.
You might recognize Kristen as one of the four, you might recognize Kristen as one of the four who worked with Chris Deleon last year and went through that competition.
Okay. Excellent. Well, congratulations. That concludes our recognitions. And Mr. Secretary, do we have citizens' requests to speak about non-action items? Right? I don't see anyone rising to speak, and I see him shaking his head, so we will then move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a very brief report, as I'll be doing a more lengthy update through the annual meeting. I just wanted to comment on a few things. The start of the school year, we're a full week into the start of the school year. We had a lot of great things that happened. Things went pretty smoothly, even though we're trying to move 5,500 kids into our buildings. Just tremendous, tremendous things happening with our staff. On a personal note, my son, who started third grade at Hudson Prairie, just has had an outstanding experience. They've been very warm and welcoming. I've gotten to see firsthand what it's like to be a parent, coming to the district from the outside, being a new parent to the district, and so that's been a great experience. Our back-to-school activities with staff were extremely well-received, I believe. We brought in a guest speaker, Billy McCullough, McLaughlin, I'm sorry. And he was a gentleman that talked about having to teach himself how to replay the guitar with his other hand. And he came up and he performed for staff, and it was really quite an inspirational story. He was a Grammy Award-winning artist that had everything, was on top of the world, and lost everything due to an illness that he had suffered, and was able to fight his way back. And so just a great, great experience for our staff. They really enjoyed that. Got to some of the back-to-school meetings with staff. There's a lot of positive energy, positive activity, and so a lot of great things going on. And then the last part that I wanted to just touch base on was the board policy update as far as getting our board policies online. We are, we believe we have all of the board policies in a format that they're ready to go online. We're just verifying that we have the most up-to-date current policies ready to go. I would anticipate here in the next few weeks, they'll be live and online, ready to go, so anybody can access all of our most current board policies right from our website. And so that's been a process that we've been working, that Tony's been spearheading and working through also Andrea's department as well to get that stuff done. So I'll be more, much more in-depth with a report here at the seven o'clock meeting, but that's what I wanted to touch on for tonight. So, thanks.
Very good. Any questions for Dr. Olet? I have to make sure that I say his last name, because habit of saying Dr. Nick, and then people start thinking Nick's your last name. But, all right. So hearing no questions for superintendent, then yonder reports, and for the board's, the president's report, since our last regular meeting, we had our special meeting, which was a work session on the 20th of August. We continue to look at improving the way we operate as a board, and we have implemented one of those changes, and that is we moved up the citizens' request to speak about non-action items. It's now been moved up, so it's before the superintendent's report, but after recognitions. So that's one thing. We also, at the work session, we talked about goals. That's going to be an action item. Then the other item that was attended, and the superintendent alluded to it, and that is the new teacher luncheon. I attended that. Bruce was as well. All board members are invited, but realize it's in the middle of the workday. But again, I thought it was a very good experience to see the energy in the room. It's kind of a combined event between those that come to the Hudson Public School District, and then those that are going to St. Pat's. So there's new teachers there as well. Got to hear both the St. Pat's principal speak, and then Dr. Olet. But then they go around, they introduce, all the teachers introduce each other. And what I was really struck with was the number of alumni. I thought that was really cool, that we are, the people that are graduating from our high school are coming back to teach here. And also, very impressed with the high percentage of people who are intending to live here as well. It's not atypical for our newer teachers to be living either still in Minnesota, or maybe some communities where there's a little bit more affordable housing. But just to see them here in this district, I thought is a great combination. And so we've got some, some folks that are really excited to be part of this district. So that was good to see. At this time, then, because the other part to our work session was talking about the criteria on the secondary space. And, you know, we talk about it a lot, because it comes up in different things. It comes up in our goals. It comes up, you know, just with this community engagement process. So we have three of the public members of the PST here. If you guys could come forward, and I say guys purposely, our female member, Jill Burchell, couldn't be here tonight, but Tom Van Pelt, Paul Borchet, Joel Skinner, if you guys could come up to a microphone, please. The efforts of the PST kind of culminated on September 2nd. We've been meeting for, well, since January. We started with the consultant, Ann Carroll, who helped us design the process. And many times, you know, we obviously didn't have the whole thing planned out, because part of it is an organic process. You learn as you go, and things develop. We have many, many documents already posted on the website. That includes the summaries from Stage 1 and 2, and the early part of Stage 3. But the board set this date with, the recommendation of the PST was September 2nd. What we didn't realize, and or maybe think too far ahead, was how do we get the turnaround to be able to report it here at this meeting, which is occurring the day after Labor Day weekend? And September 2nd, as you know, was Wednesday, and it was, in my view, a tremendous success. I want the PST members to maybe kind of say a few words about what they felt like for this process. But we had hoped for something over 100 people. We ended up having 160. And now, board members should have received today via email, as well as hard copy tonight, which is results of the community engagement workshop. And this is both a summary of what happened at the workshop, as well as the results of the workshop. This primary author, she'd get lots of credit for basically giving up his Labor Day weekend, is Paul Borchet. And Paul, we want to give you a hand for the job you did on this document. It wasn't an easy task, and because we had no idea how many people would show up. So how many tables do we set up? Turned out, we didn't have enough tables set up. So we were scrambling at the very last minute. I had, I almost got emotional, though, seeing, turning around and seeing the line that went from the front door out into the parking lot, people waiting to get their materials. This is a much bigger turnout than we had anticipated. And so we didn't, as a result, we didn't get, start exactly on time. And we thought, what happens if we have too many people in the room? Well, we said, let's, that's a good problem to have, let's deal with it, as we did. And we ended up having an overflow room in the cafeteria. But we ended up, now, correct me, guys, was it 18 separate groups? I think it was eight, somewhere between 18 to 20. We had 160 people show up.
Correct.
All right. And everybody had a part. Tom did a great intro, and then we, as PST, were just kind of going around the room, answering folks' questions. Matt was there from, Matt Wolfert was there from Bray, who gave kind of an introduction into these options that were basically what Bray worked on, based on the comments from stages 2 and 3, the early stage of, phase of Stage 3. And then it was turned over to the various small groups, and they were free to talk about. We did assign one option per table. And ended up, because of the number of tables, we had some folks assigned to, more than one table, assigned to an option. But then we said, once you've vetted that option, advantages, disadvantages, any modifications, comments, or questions you have on it, then they were free to go to any option they wanted. And if they didn't like what was on the page, they could color outside the lines, and they could go ahead and create their own. And as a result, this summary document you have before you has basically 20 options, and that includes Option 2 and 2A that Bray had derived. So some of these are very similar. Some of the ones, they're the original options with modifications, but still nonetheless, we have about 19 to 20 options here. And every comment that was written down, which had to be typed up, and was amazing that it was typed up in 24 hours, and then it had to be arranged in some fashion. And so, but every word, I understand, is there. And I can't say that personally, that I know that, but I have the confidence that was done, because I know Paul was given the raw data sheets, and went through them all, and can verify that all the comments are there. And so, and that's one of the things we promised. And then it's a summary, and it's organized in a fashion that kind of makes sense, and hopefully that will help us as a board as we make future decisions. But guys, do you have any comments to add to the description of the workshop, and then the results that we've got up to this point? I just want to, while the PST team has designed going on into the future, included in that is a survey. We need to get to what's going to be on that survey. We don't know. But at this point, it's kind of a handoff process between the PST and the board to get that funneling. Because one of the commitments we had as a PST was not to get into content, not to be making decisions about which options are in and which options are out, per se, that that was going to be more board, but still, community-driven. And I think we stayed true to that promise. But guys, I want to turn it over to you to have comments.
Just briefly, I'm Joel Skinner, and I'm here with Paul Borchet and Tom Van Pelt. On the, on the point about the length of the process, I don't think anyone in the group regrets the time that we spent on it. It was a, it was really an open-ended process. We didn't know what we were going to receive, and how many people would participate. So I think all the, the time set out in the agenda that was developed back in, in February was, was really preliminary. And, and so the fact that we're going in right up to the, I guess the plan is up to the end of September, I don't think is any, reflects any way negatively on the process. I think it's a positive thing. I certainly have no regrets. On the point about the, the person who spent their entire Labor Day processing all this information, Paul Borchet, I second that, Mr. Johnson. I was traveling during the holidays and was just barraged with email after email, and draft after draft of what Paul was going through. So I really, really appreciate that, what Paul did. But I want to also thank Dave Grahambough and Tracy Habash-Aline, and their staff, who was the initial scrivener of all the information that we developed at the workshop. I can't remember the, I believe it's a woman, but I, Annette, yeah, Annette did an incredible job of getting anything. We had a lot of paper there, and a lot of stuff to go through, and, and working really with Paul and Dave, they, they made sure that all the information's there, so we believe it's complete. I'll hand over the microphone, so my, my colleagues can comment if they wish.
Make one observation, if I might. Going through the Phase 3, where we were trying to capture some of the people's ideas, that was fairly well-balanced, I thought, between build and remodel. And the workshop, I was a little disappointed that there was, things were a little skewed towards a new build. So there were only three groups out of 18 that were focused on that. So I would ask you to try to keep that in mind when you move forward with your deliberations. But other than that, the workshop was a real success, and we managed to keep the whole process steward team together for 23 months. That's pretty amazing. So, Tom?
Well, and
Tom has nothing to say.
Well, I want to definitely thank you guys again, because you didn't get paid to do this, and when asked, you didn't shy away from the task. In fairness, I don't know that you knew exactly how many meetings would be, but because everything's posted, everyone can go on the website and see all the different dates that we had formal noticed meetings. And it doesn't even count in the time and the work that would go in between meetings, where we were working on documents, and planning, and so forth. Really, really appreciate your efforts, and want to make sure that the folks know, too, the next steps, that this is not, I think I said that before, not the end of the community engagement process. We're going to have our board listening session on the 29th, in which we're going to do an exercise that's going to try and break down those 19 or 20 options to three options that could be on the survey, and then work, continue to work on the language of the survey going into October. But we're going to be coming back to the community for more input with that survey. And then there are probably likely more work even after that survey results come in in November. So we still got a timeline to go, but the intensive weekly or bi-weekly meetings of the PST, I think, all that effort, though, was well worth it. And I know, Bruce, you probably have some comments to make.
Yeah, just a couple. Do want to echo Jamie's comments to thank you for all the efforts. I know we didn't all agree in the room all the time, and that's healthy. I mean, it was really good to have just the debate, the discussion, you know, lively chatter amongst our, our team, I think, really helped us get to a point where we got a lot of good feedback right now. The same held true with 160 people. I mean, everybody really worked well together at that event, and there was a lot of buzz and energy in that event as well. So I think it, it really went off the way that we were all, I think, hoping for it to turn out. Couple other quick comments. Just because we have all this data at this point in time, doesn't mean that you still can't put your ideas in. That opportunity is still available. The online opportunity is there for you to continue to get your input into consideration. So don't stop if you felt like you missed something, or you wanted to get an idea, and make sure that you get your comments in, because as a board, we want to make sure we get all that. We have a lot of work ahead of us as a board. There is a lot of detail here, and I think we, we need to, you know, really take this seriously, and we owe it to the PST group, the community, to take this and try and get it to a point where we can get to a community-sponsored solution, as opposed to, you know, just something that we all think is going to pass. So excited to see the work that we have as a group coming up ahead of us, and expect more healthy, lively debate from our group going forward.
Right. And with that, Bruce is right, that the online version, just so it's clear, because I think when we were interviewed by Mike Foley with Hudsonite.com, we said something about leaving it open till about the 23rd. But we realized that in order for Bray to be able to do some meaningful analysis, we need to have the cutoff date a little sooner. So we made that a week from today, September 15th. So anyone watching this who wasn't able to attend the workshop, they'll be able to go on the website tonight, if they want, and add their ideas when it comes to the different options, advantages, disadvantages, modifications for any of the options. But then tomorrow, as my understanding, we'll be able to get this executive summary Paul prepared, and was then edited by, and reviewed by the other PST members. That's going to become a public document that folks can access. So then they can read and say, yeah, I guess if I would have been there, that's one of the options I would have talked about, but I would have added this comment or that. Anyone can do that through the 15th. And then after the 15th is where the folks at Bray will sit down, look at the options. The ones that are minor modifications of what we've already had worked on for budget-wise is not going to be as daunting. There's a couple that were kind of brand-new, and that's ones that Bray's going to try and tackle to give us some ballpark estimate of cost when we meet on the 29th. But unless you have something else, I just want to give these guys a big round of applause.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. And Jill Burchell.
And Jill as well.
And Jill Burchell as well, yes, definitely. Lots of time on your part. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. With reports, the 2015 ACT results.
Thank you. And just a quick background comment, so our viewers know. The ACT is a curriculum-based measure of college readiness, which is required by many colleges and universities for entrance, and especially in the Midwest, it's pretty much the sole assessment that is used. Our scores reflect students in grades 12 who took the ACT as juniors or seniors. So that's who you're, what scores you're seeing this evening. And as you can see, we are thrilled, absolutely thrilled, to share this evening that the district's 2015 average score is 24.4. Hudson High School was among the top scores in the state, ranking 15th out of 424 districts. This achievement reflects the district's ongoing focus on student learning and building a system of excellence. And as you can see, scores do fluctuate from year to year, so a more valid conclusion about the quality of education and college preparation in Hudson would be by analyzing a five-year average. And I put that at the bottom of the grid. And our five-year average, 2011 to 2015, is 23.9. And so it validates that what we are doing is a quality education in Hudson. A huge thank you to our K-12 teachers, who work extremely hard to deliver high-quality instruction to all students. And kudos to our students, who are committed to challenge themselves by pursuing rigorous coursework. Students who take four or more years of English, three or more years of math, science, and social studies, all tend to score higher. So a few comparisons. First, we look at our Big Rivers Conference, and our composite score is at the top. Our percent total is 76 percent this year. Again, that fluctuates. And just to note, and I'll have a few comments at the end, too, just recognize now, this will be our last year sharing these kinds of scores, because now throughout the state, all juniors are required to take the ACT. So from now on, that percentage for everyone will be 100 percent taking the test. So Big Rivers Conference comparison, top. High-performing comparable-sized districts. So for several years now, when we look at different assessment comparisons, state assessments, we have selected certain districts that have similar demographics and size to ours. And again, 24.4, top of those comparable districts, and feeling, feeling really strong about what we're doing. And then finally, to keep us humble And then finally, to keep us humble and constantly working, we then look at the highest-performing districts in the state, with Mequon-Deansville at the top, with a composite score, this is just amazing, of 25.9, with 91% of their students tested. So it keeps us having a little benchmark of where we can still head, but very proud of our 24.4 this year. And as I stated earlier, then, I'm like stuck here. That this year, the juniors, or in 2014-15, all juniors throughout the state took the assessment as part of the Wisconsin System Accountability. So this is the last year you'll see those, and we'll start with a whole new baseline. In some ways, it'll be a little more apples-to-apples because the percentage of students will be 100%. But as a state and as a district, that 25, 35% who aren't testing will probably, most likely, bring everyone's score slightly down to start when you go to 100%. So it's just a reality check of where we're going to begin next year at this time. But for right now, we are going to just enjoy our 24.4 for this year. Any questions on ACT?
Mr. President? Rob?
Sandy, do you have an idea how large Mequon-Deansville is, student population?
I don't have it in front of me, no.
Or do you have any idea how large we are compared to these other top, you know, top four schools?
We tend, that's why we brought in the comparable size, because most of them were smaller than us.
Okay. Sandy?
Yeah, a question. You made the statement that next year, all of the students, all of the juniors have to take the test?
Yeah, they act, our juniors actually took, our seniors this year, all of them took it last year. Does that mean, in 2014-15, all juniors took the test? And now there's seniors this year.
But the special ed students aren't going to have to take this, are they?
Yes. Yep. But they still have...
The same test?
But they do have some accommodations and modifications, just like they do with other standardized tests. But yes, the same test. And many of them qualify to have it as a score for college entrance. Tony, tell me if I'm saying anything incorrect there.
That is correct.
Okay.
And we also looked up Mequon-Deansville enrollment. It's about 3,500.
Thank you.
Got a question, Bruce?
Yeah, could you maybe speak to the standard of the change and why the change to everyone having to take 100%?
Oh, okay.
Could you just speak to that a little bit, please?
Yes. So as part of the new system of accountability in the state of Wisconsin, all students in 9th and 10th grade take what's called the ACT Aspire, and all 11th graders take the full ACT. And so last March, all of our juniors took the ACT, and all of our, obviously, 9th and 10th graders took that ACT. Now they've all rolled up. So our seniors now are all part of that group that took the ACT. So next September, when I talk about their scores, some of them may have retaken it as seniors. There'll be other scores that mix in. But right now, we will wait until next September just to see the impact of 100% of our juniors taking that test.
Okay. Just to clarify then, because on the agenda, it says 2015 ACT results. Were those results, are those for kids taking the ACT in 2015? Doesn't sound like it.
Nope. So that was of the 2014-15. It was our 2015 graduates.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I got you. So now the 2016 graduates have taken it in the last year, the previous year.
Correct. At least their first time.
Okay. Any further questions regarding the ACT results? I guess congratulations to our staff. And, you know, we always strive to improve, and when you're already one of the top ones in the state, to continue to improve is, that's excellent. That's what we strive for here, so. Any other questions? All right. If not, moving on. Then preliminary AP, that's the Advanced Placement Results. And Sandy, this is you, too. So previously, you announced the Advanced Placement Scholars, the fact that we had 128, and that was an increase, and showing a trend of continuing increase. And I know that there was an Advanced Placement Honor Roll that we've been part of for at least three years. I think it was four. Last year was our fourth year in a row?
Yeah. Last year, I believe, we did not make it, but it had been four up to that point.
Okay.
So we're waiting now. It's usually out, I think, like in January, December, or January, waiting to hear.
So tell us about these preliminary, how this compares to what the final then?
So these were just released, hence the word preliminary week, because where there is time for students and/or teachers to go through and make sure that the scores are entered as they should. Again, Advanced Placement is where we offer courses within the high school, and students who earn a 3, 4, or 5 have the opportunity then to earn college credit. Depends on the college or university, but again, it's an opportunity to take college-level classes while they're in high school. And at Hudson, we currently offer 13 AP courses, and they are in social studies, they are in science, world languages, and also studio art, but a variety, nine courses. And then we also, you might remember, too, that we added some virtual online, too, for those students who may want like AP macroeconomics or microeconomics. So there are also nine online AP courses that students can take. This year, we had 632 students who took 1,071 tests last May. And ta-da, the results. So you can see, the 1,071 exams kind of blew the top off of anything that we had done before. So I just wanted to note in the grid this year that one of the key pieces for the numbers of students and the number of exams going up is you added AP Human Geography as a course for 2014-15. And it's basically a 10th-grade course. They can take it at other times, but basically a 10th-grade course. That was pretty much our first AP course at that level. And we had a tremendous turnout. I want to say that first year, we had seven sections of AP Human Geography. So that was the huge jump. And then AP, the College Board itself, has revised the science, the physics strand. So we now have AP Physics 1, 2, and C, the calculus base. And then if you go back into 2012, you can see that our little jump there was we added AP Statistics. So you can see a little bit of, some of the jumps are due to what you have approved as a board with some new courses. But when we look at some of those numbers over four years, so if you look at like the number of students, from 312 in 2011 up to 632, that is an increase of 103% in those, in those five years. And then from 483, the number of exams, to 1,071, an increase of 122% in those five years. So again, just kudos to staff who are, again, providing just amazing opportunities. And again, to our students who are taking rigorous courses, because obviously, you can see the numbers say that. And then what we're truly proud of, too, is that even as those numbers are going up, you can see that our percentage of students who are passing at that 3-plus level is staying fairly constant. So that is, that's huge, to have that kind of increase and still keep that percentage of passage at such a high level. So some other good news, it's kind of fun to share such good news tonight. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce?
Congrats. Again, this is really fantastic to see the numbers. Curious what sort of plans you have, either for additional online AP courses or AP courses taught at our schools. So that'd be one question. Second question would be, do we know how we compare to some of the other schools that we're measuring ourselves against in the ACT?
Not yet. When I go into the state site right now with them being preliminary, I can't see any comparisons.
Can you, can you see how many courses they offer?
If I went to some of their course handbooks, I could see. We're closer now than we were five years ago, because that was some of what I had done at that point, was done a little comparison. But that would be one to go back and just see again what we, what we offer.
Yeah.
The one that we're looking that has been on the books, but we haven't offered, but now I believe with some of the upgrades that you have made to the science labs, is AP Biology.
Awesome.
So we're hoping to bring that back in the next couple of years. That would be one that I know is on the top of our list.
Yeah, that's great. Again, take nothing away from the work that's been done. It's tremendous. And I think, you know, finding more opportunities to offer more, because even that 10th-grade class this year was tremendous, you know, the participation and the opportunities, I think, for kids to be able to take advantage of some of those at younger ages. Again, assuming they can get a 3 or above, right? But it's still really taking education to another level. So appreciate all the work that you guys continue to do there.
I would be curious, one of the statistics, as far as the number of students taking the courses versus the number taking the exams. I know that it's the exams taken and the passing rate is what, you know, we're judged with other districts with. But I'd just be curious of the ones who are taking the classes, how many are brave enough, if you will, to take the test and, and then get the scores they're getting. Did you have a question, Sue?
Yeah, I just was curious, what is the makeup of the College Board? Is it schools or people or, you use the word College Board. They oversee, what do they do?
All I know is that's the company, that's who I go to.
It's a company.
That oversees Advanced Placement courses and...
Is it Wisconsin-centered?
No, national.
It's national, okay. All right. Nice.
So if you're taking studio art here or in Tennessee, it would be the same exam.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions then about the Advanced Placement? And thank you again, Sandy, and congratulations to our students and their great scores, and again, a great reflection of this district. All right. Now we're finally on to Topics for Action. And due to one of the other changes that we've made in our meetings, the consent item is now at the top of Topics for Action. And so I would entertain a motion using the language in the minutes.
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent items and that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,098,509.55.
Second.
There's been a motion and second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent agenda is passed. Now, we move on to approval of new policy 3122, fraud prevention and reporting. And Lynn, this item has your name next to it.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all know, as part of the district's ongoing audit of policy, we have identified the need for a new policy on fraud prevention and reporting. The language is recommended by WASB. And because it is a new policy, you have it as a separate item instead of just under consent. And it was unanimously approved by the committee, and it's, Tim will review any details that he, or if you have any questions.
When you say the committee, it's the, which committee?
Finance Committee.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, I don't have a lot to add. The language is there as it was written mainly by WASB. But studies have shown, if you have a fraud policy in place, and people know that you've got a fraud policy, and they suspect fraud going on, you have a better chance of someone reporting that. So that's certainly one of the good things about having a fraud policy in place.
Okay. And so again, this is not something because we saw it as an issue or a problem with our district individually, but something that's being recommended or mandated by the state?
It's a recommended policy through Wisconsin Association of School Boards. And also, you know, I've got some of the research on the background on, you know, again, you are probably able to reduce the likelihood with a policy in place where you have a chain of reporting that happens, and a person can go to someone and talk to about it. But yes, nothing, this isn't, we're not adopting this, we're not recommending adoption of this policy because we think there's fraud going on. It's just a good, good policy to have in place.
All right. Any other questions regarding this policy? I noticed it does have whistleblower language in there so that no one would be discriminated against if they suspected something and reported it in good faith.
Mr. President?
All right. Bruce?
Yeah, I mean, to me, this seems very simple, you know, to move forward with. You know, it's very common right now in terms of what we're seeing in the private sector as well. This is an area that really is important for companies and for the public sector to be focused on. I think policies are only as good as how we implement them, though, right? So I think we talked a little bit about this in our meeting, the opportunity to at least do some form of training or make sure we're getting it out there, or at least communicating this new policy and the fact that, you know, we take these things very seriously. So I think the, that opportunity's there for us and very supportive of this new policy we're adding.
All right. Any other comments or questions regarding this? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we adopt this policy, policy, ah, where is it at? Yeah, okay, 3122. Thank you.
Second.
All right. Carrie beat you to it. So a motion by Sue, second by Carrie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries and the policy is adopted. Next, under Topics for Action, we have approval of district goals. And that probably, it will be up on the screen here soon. And just noticed, the date says submitted August 18th, 2015. That's because that was the draft that went to the board. We had discussion about moving it forward, and as a result of that, there was one change, and that was about the, create an implementation plan for HSD 2025, addressing remaining portions of the vision and highlight current accomplishments. Otherwise, with that one exception, this is basically identical to what was discussed by the board at the work session. And, you know, if there's other questions about the entire document, you know, can ask them now, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob?
Just a quick...
I think your mic's off. Can you hear me? There you go.
So during our discussion, we talked about the tenure facilities plan and a year-over-year annual budget, as well as with the HSD 25 plan, you know, an annual, annual goals, as well as a budget. And I'd like some assurance that will, in our planning, that will include some form of year-over-year high-level budgeting.
And I can speak to that. The language is very similar for the implementation plan for HSD 25 as it is with the facility plan, which is the last, I believe, the last bulleted point on the sheet. Yeah, right now with HSD 2025, it will be a little more difficult to put budget numbers to that. The goal would be to put some high-level budget numbers to it, but at this point, I couldn't, part of the reason why the word's not on there is I can't guarantee that we could give you a budget number on every part of the implementation plan at this point, especially as it moves forward and may involve some staffing issues and things along the lines. Whereas we feel much more comfortable when we talk about long-term facility planning and starting to kind of extrapolate out what those costs are.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments regarding these goals? Again, it's another aggressive agenda, but one that combines, I like the words, investment in human capital and not just, you know, the bricks and mortar part of getting a secondary space referendum on the ballot. Bruce?
I think there's some exciting, high-level goals on here. The branding campaign, I think, is real exciting. You know, an opportunity for us to continue to bring our schools together, our community together. So I think overall, you know, I like the high-level nature of these. I know underneath them, there are plenty of actionable items that go along with them to be able to execute on the high-level overall goal. So I appreciate the work that you guys put together on putting these goals together for the 2015-16 calendar year.
Any other questions or comments on whether it's a particular area of goals or a specific goal itself?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment on, you like the word investment in human capital, and I like the word connecting. And I also like the word transparency because it's a two-way street. And I think I'm sitting on a marvelous company on this board. And I think we're making every effort to see through the window and hopefully, the community can see right back. And I'm applauding that particular goal. And I think we're all on board to work to achieve it in a very healthy and adamant way.
Thanks, Sue. Any other comments?
Move to approve the district goals for 2015-16 district year.
All right. Motion by Bruce, second by Sandy. Somebody's anxious to get to our annual meeting, I think. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. So our district goals for this school year are approved. And speaking of the 2015-2016 school year, we have the proposed budget levy. And speaking of the 2015-2016 school year, we have the proposed budget levy, and Lynn, this is your area as treasurer and chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board members, as you're very well aware, we've reviewed this budget on multiple occasions, and the Finance Committee has worked on multiple meetings in detail with Tim and his team on the budget. We know we're facing some challenges, including a 9.4% reduction in state aid, coupled with some really key investments this year as it relates to investment dollars this board has approved in the teacher salary structure, a really important initiative that we approved this year. The mill rate is projected to go from 8.84 to 8.86, and the Finance Committee unanimously approved this budget, as well as working with the greater board on it, and I'll turn it over to Tim to review the details. I'm not sure how into detail you're going in this meeting, since you'll be covering it in detail in the next one, but-
I think, I think everybody's getting ready to have the meeting come to an end, right? So, yeah, I think Lynn has summed, summed it up well, and the board has seen this budget a few times, as well as finance. Our challenge is, when you look at the summary of major budget assumptions, one of the things is this assumes an under levy, an under levy of about $13 million. Those are dollars that could be levied, but haven't, and over the past number of years, we have, we have done that for roughly the past 10, 11, 12 years. What gets challenging is that we're also one of the lowest-spending districts in the state, so when we have a reduction, like Lynn mentioned, of almost 10% of one of our biggest revenue streams, it doesn't give us much room to cut. We're already spending at lower levels. So, you know, I think that's just one of the things that has to be looked at in the future, but I won't say any more than that, because I think you, again, you've all seen the numbers, and we'll get into more detail at the annual meeting.
All right. I think, though, it's important, just briefly, to address the history of, you know, the budgeting process. It's unlike what some people probably have in their companies in the private sector. And we also have two new board members who weren't here when this budget was first discussed and first introduced, I believe, at the March meeting. And so this proposed budget is, first of all, we're taking action tonight, we are making a vote, but it's not our final numbers and are not our final levy, so I want you to clarify that. And number two, how we got here from where we were six months ago in March.
Yeah, that's a good point, Jamie. So as far as this proposed budget that you're looking at tonight, you'll approve this, but then, as Jamie mentioned, this is not the final. The final is in October, so towards the end of October, the board will adopt a budget. Right now, some of the big, the variable factors are, state aids are an estimate from the Department of Public Instruction, property values are an estimate from the Department of Revenue, and so those are our two biggest numbers, and they're subject to change based on what we've received as an estimate and what the final numbers are. And when we went in initially, looking at this back in March, we were looking at about, I believe it was about a 19% increase in the levy. We've made several reductions and restructurings, we've restructured some debt to relieve the tax levy, we have made reductions in the areas such as professional development, we've reduced some of our capital purchases, equipment purchases, so we've made a number of reductions to get to where we are, are at this point in time, so.
Thank you. Tim, excuse me. There's another slide, I think the next slide talks about impact on the levy, and there it is. If you could scroll that up so we can see historically what's happened with our tax base over the last 25 years, and then what's happened with, thank you, with what's happened with the property tax levy and how it's fluctuated over the years. We had a period there between '96 and 2005, that's about a 10-year period, where we had more years where it was multiple or double-digit change, and one year, we had a 32% increase, that was between 2001 and 2002. Now, included in these last 25 years has been at least, I want to say, four major building projects, between remodels, additions, new buildings, going back to the middle school in '93. So anyway, the, in the end, the 6.73% increase in the levy as compared to 2014-15 is, ends up being a 2 cent increase in the mill rate because of the increase in, estimated increase in the tax base.
Yeah, the, the good point is, you do see, when you look at 14-15, and then what's estimated for 15-16 in property value growth, is 7.26 and six, almost 6.5%. When we look statewide, those, the average statewide runs around 2.5% for each one of those years. So we're, we're seeing strong property valuation. I believe we had about $60 million of improvements district-wide in that, the 15-16 number, so we're definitely seeing new building that's occurring, et cetera. The one, the one bad part about that is, when we go up above and we have strong valuations, the state formula says, okay, now your local taxpayers can afford to pay more, so we're going to take dollars, state aid away from the district and redistribute it to other districts. And so that's where the formula works against us. When we look at the 2 point, roughly 2.6 million that we're going to lose, roughly over half of that amount is just due to the formula and what that high valuation does to us. So that, that's the, it's the good and the bad of the budget and the levy and the formula.
Okay, any other questions for Tim? All right. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the proposed budget and levy.
Sue moved.
Second.
Motion by Bruce, second by Sue. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, and we've completed our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Bruce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are now adjourned until 7:00 PM, at which time we will begin the annual meeting. Thank you.